Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September meeting of the Yarandakoid zoning board of appeals. Before we get underway, there's a few administrative things that I need to address. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator, use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Our meetings are recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record in minutes, not for the purpose of a transcript. In order to help her make sure she has accurate information, when you come to the microphone, if you would be sure and identify yourself each time that you come and speak clearly into the microphone. We follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda near the doorway. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative should come to the podium, identify themselves, state their address, then pause, raise their right hand to be sworn, and then present their case to the board. During the applicant's presentation, the members of the board have an opportunity to question the applicant or engage in discussion with the applicant. Once that process is completed, then we open the hearing to public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application should come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct their questions and comments to the board. We usually open the hearing to three categories of those who wish to speak to the board. The first category we invite forward are those who wish to speak in favor of the application. When we've heard from those people, we then open it up to those who would like to speak in opposition to the application. The last category has evolved over time. It's anyone who doesn't have a position either for or against the application, but wants to talk to us about something that in some way is related to the application. Once all the public input has been heard, then the applicant and their representative are given the opportunity to respond to any public input. And once that has been completed, then the case is closed and we move on to the next case. After all the cases have been heard, we usually take a short recess and then return to deliberate each case. The order in which we deliberate on the cases is the order in which they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant remains present. So if the applicant for the first case has left, but the applicant for the second case is here, we would deliberate on the second case first, move to the next case for which the applicant is present. And once we've deliberated and completed all the cases for which the applicants have remained, then we'll go back to the top of the agenda and deliberate on those for which the applicant is no longer here. During this part of the meeting, there is no further input that is allowed unless it's specifically requested by the board. You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave. If you leave and you're interested in knowing what happened, if you get there in time, you can catch us on channel thirteen something.
Oh, three.
Thirteen oh three. Or you can call the town in the morning, ask to speak to someone in the planning and zoning department after nine in the morning, and they'll be glad to tell you what our decision was. So with that being said, the first item on our agenda is an off agenda item. And that is with respect to... There's an application to rezone a portion of real property located at 2590 Culver Road to allow for the future development of a multifamily residential project. The proposed project has been classified as an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the town board is electing to conduct a coordinated review. So since it's possible that this board would have some involvement in that, we have been asked to defer to the town board who wishes to act as the lead agency for purposes of seeker. So I would make a motion that we allow the town board to act as lead agency for seeker purposes with respect to the project at 2590 Culver Road.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The board is fully constituted, and now we can move on to the matters on the agenda.
First item on the agenda is case number ZB 2020-9-1, upon the matter of request by Gary and Nancy Pelosi for an area variance to install a shed within the front yard on premises 54 Thatcher Road in an R1 residential district.
How you doing? Good evening. My name is Gary Pelosi. I live at 54 Thatcher Road. This is my wife.
I'm Nancy Pelosi. I also live at 54 Thatcher Road.
Do we have to take an oath now?
Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Of course, again, my name is Gary Pelosi. I'd like to thank the committee for their time and their efforts, and for anybody who stopped by my house. We're applying for a variance for an eight by ten shed that we'd like to place in the front of our house, more of the face of the front of the house. We understand the reason why and the need for this variance, okay? Our house is a setback house, meaning that our house is set behind other houses, okay? We're the last house before a gully that goes about for a half a mile. To install the house, excuse me, to install the shed behind the house or the front face of the house brings in environmental concerns, okay? We'd have to have permission from the town to cut down trees, and also they would require a financial burden on us, and we don't want to do that. Don't want to encroach on the environment. Okay, also the aesthetics of our backyard and the neighbors' backyard would change. Our neighbor at 32 Thatcher Road has a one-car detached garage in front of the house. For us to install a shed in the back of the house would ruin the aesthetics of both backyards. It's totally open, overlooking a gully, forever wild because you can't develop down there. So we prefer to put it in the side of the house. And I noticed some of the people are looking at the pictures and the zone. It's kind of an unusual area. It's going to be in bushes. We're not even going to be seen from other houses. We also have a letter from the people in front of us who would affect the most. They have no objections to the house. This gentleman here is looking. The shed's going to go right where that rocker is, okay, where the glider was. Also, we talked to our neighbors, and I don't see any of them here, and I don't think we're going to get any objections. We actually have a letter from one of the neighbors approving of our decision. Anything you want to hand over?
No, I think you said everything. I just wanted to summarize, though, that the uniqueness of our property, a house behind a house. So our front yard is really facing the backyard of our neighbors, the Tootinos, who live in front at number forty-six. The shed placement, although technically, I guess you would consider it the front yard, it's really the front towards the corner of our property. And there's a large hedge row, if you notice in the pictures, so that our neighbors in front, the Tootinos, actually, as they look in their backyard, they see more of a hedge row than they would be actually looking at the shed. And the other thing my husband said is both our side and our back property are on steep slopes with many trees. So that's why we really didn't have a lot of options. To the east of our property, our driveway is the border. To the west, we're in a tree lot bordering on a steep slope, and the backyard pretty much is a drop-off with many trees. So this is kind of, it's the corner, but technically it's in front of the foundation of the front of our house. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input at this point. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about, you know, lots behind lots, buggies, sheds, that kind of thing? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. All set then? We're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 2020-9-2, upon the matter of request by Joshua Fatticoen for an area variance to install street-side fencing on a corner lot with less-than-required setback on premises 109 Windale Road in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time. My name is Josh Fatticoen. I live at 109 Windale Road, and my proposed variance is for a fence on the...
I need you to stop, raise your right hand.
Oops, sorry.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. Okay. So yeah, like I said, the proposed variance for a fence on the property of 109 Windale Road, it is a corner lot. So the fence is going to be on the Garden roadside, which continues, it'll be going from my driveway to the backyard, which is the corner of my neighbor's yard. So it's going to be pretty close to their fence that's already existing there. Theirs is probably a little bit closer to the sidewalk than mine will be, if you've seen from pictures, if there's any pictures taken. There's a little wall before the sidewalk, so mine's going to be back further from that wall, so it won't be as close to the sidewalk as my neighbor's fence. Basically, the fence is, you know, more for privacy, but at the same time, there's some arborvitae trees that are there that are just very docile, and they, they're not very curb appeal looking. We bought the house five years ago, and they've just been the way they've looked since we... They've looked a little bit better since we've cleaned some of the debris out of there, but at this point, we'd rather just put up a fence. Plus, down the road, we want to install an above-ground pool. So I feel like that would look much better with a fence, you know, for that purpose. The fence that I've already... There is already fencing along the backside of the property from neighbors, plus there's fencing on the other side of the yard that existed when I bought the house. We will be cutting down the trees so the fence can be installed, which the fence is going to be in the right-of-way. I felt like the fence that, without having this variance, would be too far away from where I'd like to have the fence, where the fence would typically be three feet away from that area. But it, like I said, the fence will not obstruct the sidewalk in any way that would, you know, interfere with, you know, any sidewalk clearing from snow from the town department. It'll be at least, I'd say, three feet away from the sidewalk. And the, I feel like this will improve the curb appeal, and like I said, it's designed more for privacy due to the fact that the property is a corner lot. But the proposed fence will probably be six feet in height, and around about a length of fifty feet of wood material. And the fence will not, like I said, will not impede on any DPW plowing of the sidewalk. And I think the DPW's already reviewed the area, and I think they were okay with the variance.
For the record, I believe there were email correspondence from the deputy commissioner of Public Works indicating that they had no opposition and you had permission to install the fence where the bushes currently are.
That's it.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Fatticoen? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences, corner lots, or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next case on our agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB 2020-09-3, upon the matter of request by Bruce Rayback for an area variance to install six-foot-high side yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 145 Pontiac Drive in an R1 residential district.
Hi, I'm Bruce Rayback at 145 Pontiac Drive.
You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. We just moved in about a month ago and realized when we opened the bedroom blinds that our neighbor's driveway was right there. So we want to install the six-foot stockade fence just along the one side. I consider it the back of the house by code. It's not the back of the house because we're a corner lot. I've talked to the neighbor directly affected. She had no problem with it. Several neighbors came over and were worried we were going to put a fence someplace else. I said, "No, we just want it in the side of the house officially." But there are fences like that in the neighborhood. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. When I came in the other day, they said we only need a variance for the rear end of the house, the other end where we have a picket fence, which is our fence. We're going to take down, but we're going to go the whole length of the back of the house, as I call it, the back. That's it.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about corner lots, fences, privacy, that kind of thing? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 2020-09-4, upon the matter of request by Grant Asmone for an area variance to construct an attached garage addition exceeding maximum permitted square footage and width on premises 46 Ferncastle Drive in an R2 residential district.
Good evening. I appreciate your time. My name is Grant Asmone. I reside at 46 Ferncastle Drive.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm requesting a area variance to construct an attached garage addition exceeding maximum permitted square footage and width on the premise. For the reasons, I own two antique vehicles, and right now, they're in a temporary storage. I'd like to get them in a more secure area, weather-tightened. I also own a boat, so I'd like to have enough room to put all my toys, so to speak, together, to be honest with you. I've got a petition here that I've had half a dozen of my neighbors sign agreeing that there's no issue with me building this addition to my garage. You'll have the plans in front of you, the drawings.
Could you hand that petition to Mr. Scott, and then you hand it to Mr. Antini, and we'll pass it around for everybody to see.
As you can see from the plans, you know, aesthetically, it's going to, it's going to fit the whole area. The plans are pretty comprehensive. So I'm requesting a variance to go a little bit larger than code for the reasons that I stated.
Is the part where the boat is going to be, is that going to be a little higher than the rest?
Yes, yes.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Right now, you got it stored in the corner?
Yes, I do, outside.
Yes, okay. For the record, we have a petition for approval to erect a personal garage at 46 Ferncastle Drive, signed by Dave Schuth at 32 Ferncastle, Elizabeth Kelly at 32 Ferncastle, Rose Marie Lecanelli at 93 Boucard Avenue, John Portman at 52 Ellenwood, Jessica Parisi at 75 Ellenwood, and Biagio Urillo at 69 Ferncastle Drive. And we'll just make that a part of the record pertaining to this hearing. Does anyone, any members of the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Asmone?
Yes, there is. Yes, they are. Yeah, there's a pine tree in the front that's going to come down, and there's one in the back that'll be coming down also. It's a good point.
That means you'll have less leaves to rake in the fall.
Correct.
An added bonus.
Correct. Or pay somebody else to do.
Is the, are you going to increase the driveway over to the side?
You know what? We haven't got that far. We've talked about, I talked to Donna about this when I put the permit in, as far as maybe making an addition to the driveway, but you know, that won't be right away. That might be next year, the year after.
All right. What's the impact on lot coverage for a driveway?
I think Donna went over that, and the drawing in there, you'll see, it does show on addition to the driveway, and she didn't find an issue with that, to be honest with you.
So there's two separate issues. The lot coverage is for structures only. The lot, all structures with a roof would count against lot coverage, and that's twenty-five percent of the square footage of the lot. For driveway, the paved driveway surface can take up more than thirty-five percent of the front yard area. So we would have to calculate the area of front yard if the applicant or wanted to make application for a right-of-way permit required to expand the driveway, or just wanted to expand the driveway outside of the right-of-way. The town would evaluate to determine whether or not a separate variance might be needed for that.
But you're saying you're not planning on doing this right now?
No, because again, it's not going to be coming and going in this. It's going to be something, I put something in maybe, maybe once a month possibly, or depending on the season. So it's not going to be a constant traffic in and out of that main door, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open the matter up to public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about large toy chests for adults? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Thank you.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB 2020-09-5, upon the matter of request by BME Associates acting as agent for Ridge Portland Rochester LLC and 1267 East Ridge Road Holdings LLC for area variances for the redevelopment of an existing plus-or-minus eleven thousand square foot building and construction of a new plus-or-minus twenty-five hundred square foot building with less-than-required side and rear setbacks and exceeding maximum impervious area ratio and parking on premises 1233 and 1267 East Ridge Road in an M manufacturing district.
Good evening. My name is Peter Vires from BME Associates, appearing tonight on behalf of Ridge Portland LLC, the property owner developer.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. This evening, we are appearing tonight to request area variances that would allow for the redevelopment of two properties located at 1233 and 1267 East Ridge Road, which is located at the southeast corner of East Ridge Road and Portland Avenue. Both properties are zoned M manufacturing. At 1233 East Ridge Road, that is home to the current vacant eleven thousand square-foot Rite Aid store. The area of that lot is about 1.14 acres. Immediately to its east is 1267 East Ridge Road, and that's home to the former Ridge Ratan building or store that has an existing eighty-three hundred square foot building on that property. The area of that lot's about 0.38 acres. The applicant's goal is to combine those two properties into a 1.52 acre parcel and then redevelop it as a single parcel. The existing Rite Aid building would remain with its eleven thousand square foot footprint. It would keep the drive-through on the east end of the building. It would be redeveloped to house two restaurant uses at around 5,000 square feet, and then the remaining 6,000 square feet would be retail commercial space. There is no change proposed to the Rite Aid building footprint. The Ridge Ratan building, that eighty-three hundred square foot building, would be demolished, and in its place, a new twenty-five hundred square foot standalone restaurant would be constructed. And then you can see that illustrated on the rendering to my right. To facilitate this redevelopment plan, the following variances are requested. From section 235-40B, there are setback variances required. The existing Rite Aid building currently has a rear setback of thirty-eight feet, where sixty feet is required by the code, so we would be requesting a variance to allow that rear, that building to remain at its thirty-eight foot rear setback. For the new construction, we are proposing a forty-foot rear setback in lieu of the sixty-foot rear setback, and a side setback of five feet at its southeast corner in lieu of the ten-foot side setback required by the code. The fourth variance being requested is for lot coverage. The district requires or allows a maximum lot coverage of eighty percent. This plan represents a lot coverage of eighty-six point eight percent. And finally, the last variance being requested is for parking. Based on the uses of a total of seventy-five hundred square feet of restaurant space and 6,000 square feet of retail space, the code calculates the required parking as one hundred and two spaces. This site plan proposes eighty-one spaces, so we are looking for a variance of twenty-one spaces. The variance for the Rite Aid building, I think, is pretty straightforward as it's necessary, as the building exists, and there is no additional construction or expansion of the footprint being proposed. We don't believe it's practical to shift the building twenty-two feet to the north towards East Ridge Road. The goal is to reuse that building and repurpose it for the multi-tenant uses being proposed.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Because I had a question about that. How was that, did we grant the variance for the construction of that when Rite Aid was building?
So just as the board will recall, that Michelle sent an email regarding this application. With the combination of the lots, the legal front is now the Portland side. And so I think actually the variances that were requested with the application may need to be adjusted because now that what used to be the rear setback for the Rite Aid building would now be the side setback because of that combination of lots. So this is one of those challenging issues where, when you look at the lots separately as they sit today, the variances needed might be one thing, but if you're contemplating the future combination of those lots, then the required variances shift a little bit.
So it didn't need a variance when it was built?
Yeah, so that or the, we know that the existing building received a variance. The question becomes whether or not the new building needs a rear setback, or we're contending it now may need, it might be a side setback. And so the, that's one of the issues that we were evaluating as a staff. And so I think we've determined that the legal front would now be Portland. And so the variance request may be altered. So we can certainly evaluate that, make sure we have the right guidance during the recess.
So if I understand correctly, when the Rite Aid building was built, it was built in conformity with all of the code requirements or variances that were granted that it needed?
Correct.
And it was fine as it was sitting there, and now that it isn't being changed at all?
Right, now that the lots are being combined.
Because things around it are being changed, now they need variances?
Well, that, or we may, we're, now that the lots are being combined, the configuration might, it changes a little bit in terms of what's deemed the legal front, what is deemed the legal, the back, and what's deemed the legal side yard. um, the configuration might, it changes a little bit in terms of what's deemed the legal front, what, what is deemed the legal is the back and what's deemed the legal side yard. Um, and the, the building as it sits, um, we want, we just wanna verify that it's, as the redevelopment's occurring, that the necessary, um, variances go along with it so that there's no non-conformance.
Now, the, the other question I have is the parking that's shown to the east of, no, that's the west, other side.
No, that's the west. North is on.
Right. But to the east of the new building, that park, that shows parking. What is that for?
That's on the adjoining property.
Which is?
Um.
Is that the New Look Collision Building?
Um, I'm not sure what that use is, to be honest with you.
Yeah, it's used to be, uh, yeah, it's New Look Collision.
Okay, alright. Sorry.
Okay, uh, well, based on that, I think we've gotta revise our request because if Portland Avenue is now considered the front of this parcel, that means this new building actually complies with the ten-foot side. But now we have a rear setback of five feet in lieu of sixty feet. So I don't know if we need to modify our application, cause everything we wrote-
Staffing can, as a staff review, we can re, we can revise with the board and make sure that the required, um, the, the physical layout hasn't changed. It's the legal definition that is in our code that's affected, um, the potential for, and the consolidation of lots.
Why, why is, why is the address changing to Portland when it's, when it was originally Ridge Road?
I don't know.
I mean-
No, 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 it's not, the address isn't changing. The, the-
Why is the frontage changing?
The legal definition, in our code, the legal definition of the front, um, lot line is determined, when on a corner lot, is determined by the width. So the narrower of the two, um, is-
Is, is, becomes the front?
Becomes the front.
Okay. Okay, um, bear with me then. Uh, based on that interpretation, um. So with that being said, I believe now then the Rite Aid building, I need to check something. That the Rite Aid building does not require any variances, okay? Because it is set thirty-eight feet off its south property line. And if that is now considered the side lot, it obviously complies with the ten-foot side setback. As it relates to the new construction, uh, this setback off the south line is forty feet. So that would comply with the ten-foot side. So therefore, the only area variance we would require uh, for setback relief is the rear of the new building, which we are proposing at five feet at the southeast corner, twenty-five feet at the, um, northeast corner. So the, 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 the amount of variance based on a sixty-foot rear variance or a setback requirement is anywhere from fifty-five feet, uh, to thirty-five feet. Um, with regards to the other two variances, the lot coverage variance, um, actually, the lot coverage is actually, um, reduced through the redevelopment plan. And it's very simple to understand and the Ridge Retan building was, um, I just have this exhibit here that shows you outlined in blue are the existing buildings outlined in green is the property line. This shows the massing of the Ridge Retan building and the reduction we're creating. The other thing though, and it ties, leads into the parking lot variance. Currently on that property, there are only fifty-five parking spaces. This plan will, uh, provide eighty-one parking spaces. So when we were looking at the lot coverage, we were balancing it with the parking calculation also. Because, uh, the, the site, uh, at fifty-five spaces was well below what was required by code. So we wanted to increase the parking to get it closer to the code. We also wanted to be, um, pay attention to the lot coverage. It was through working with the developer and the applicant as to what the, the right, uh, mix would be as it relates to the parking demand. Because with the combination of the parcels, parking would obviously be shared. Access would be shared. I think the takeaway in this, with this redevelopment is lot coverage slightly decreases uh, by a couple percentage points. But the number, amount of parking being provided increases quite dramatically. We still do need the parking variance of twenty-one spaces based on the calculation. Uh, but the developer is not anticipating that being an issue because of the types of uses and the ability for shared parking. Um, we did in our application letter, uh, provide responses to the five factors that the board is to require or is to review in consideration of the variance request. Um, I can go through those at the board's discretion if they have any clarification. But it is our feeling and our opinion that this redevelopment, the granting of the variances does not, uh, uh, create an undesirable change in the neighborhood as the property is already highly intensely developed. Actually, we think it will enhance the neighborhood. There is additional landscaping being added. Uh, we are increasing the setbacks from the existing Ridge Retan building, uh, to what the new construction will be. The, the building is being pulled away from the property lines. And we are providing additional parking. Um, the variances we have requested are the minimums, uh, that uh, would allow the redevelopment to occur and still achieve, uh, the development goals as it relates to parking and the new construction component. Um, and we do, do believe that the new construction combined with the shared access, the landscaping, um, and the increased setbacks for the building at twelve-sixty-seven also result in a physical improvement uh, to the district and thus not adverse or detrimental. The variances, you can say, yes, they are self-created, uh, in the fact, but on one hand, uh, the Rite Aid, I don't think as much cause the building is there, but we, actually, we don't need that variance anymore. But with the new construction, yes, it is self-created in that we are building a new building in that place. But we do see it as a dramatic improvement over what currently is there today. Um, we just believe with the application materials we've presented, uh, and the information this evening that, uh, that we don't believe the applicant gains any benefit, uh, at the expense of the health, safety or welfare of the community. And actually, we think the community stands to benefit from the redevelopment of these properties. And actually, it'll be a very good enhancement for this corner. So with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
When I looked at the plans, I think I understood that you're not adding any curb cuts. The access to the property is still going to be through the existing curb cuts, correct?
We're actually reducing curb cuts. The existing curb cut on Portland Avenue will remain. Currently, there are three curb cuts on East Ridge Road, one for Rite Aid and two for Ridge Retan. Those will be reduced to just the westernmost Ridge Retan entrance. The other two are going to be eliminated.
And in front of that, as I recall, there's a, uh, center lane for people who wanna turn left into it.
That is correct.
Okay.
Just, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, um, to clarify, that parking to the east that you're asking about, that's, it's next to Crystal Collision, or what was Crystal Collision? N- New Look Collision, that's actually owned as the, uh, uh, it's a, the store to the south of the Rite Aid store. It's, it's not Crystal Collision's property. It's-
Oh, it's part of Rochester General?
Yes, yes.
Alright, but the, the reason I was asking about that was because of normally a building that's going to be only setback five feet instead of sixty, um, creates some questions about crowding. But with the parking there,
Mm-hmm.
it isn't going to appear to somebody who's driving by or even pulling in that it's crowded to the back.
Correct. And I also believe, as we showed here, again, if you look at the massing of the existing Ridge Retan, they're, they've got, um, over a hundred and seventy feet of building right along the five-foot line. Versus here, we've got about thirty feet or, or the building is, uh, ninety-five feet total. So we're even reducing the mass of the building and the way it's, um, cocked, it, um, we actually are increasing the setback off that property line as you get closer to Ridge Road.
And you're able that way to maximize the available parking?
Correct.
Now, the, are the, uh, uses that are going to be, that are anticipated to be at this location, are they all going to attract people at the same hours or are they kinda spread like, I understand there's going to be two restaurants in the, in the, or food establishments in the Rite Aid building and another is contemplated in the standalone. Are they, are they all like lunch and dinner? Or is, are some of them more geared towards lunch and others geared towards dinner so that the parking would be spread out?
So, uh, what I can tell you is one restaurant, uh, the one that would be at the west end of the Rite Aid building closest to Portland and the, the user proposed for the standalone building, um, they're the same type of restaurant. So you could say, yes, they would mimic each other very closely, which is a lunch-dinner crowd. Uh, the user proposed for the east end actually would probably have a morning component. Um, so it might be more morning-afternoon. Uh, and then the retail spaces would just be general retail, um, so.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Sure.
Is the drive-through staying for the east side then, or is it gonna be for the west?
Uh, the drive-through is remaining. Uh, we talked that through with staff and with the planning board, um. And at this time, since it's already there, already permitted, it's gonna be there. Uh, we're gonna leave it there. Uh, that end user may use it as pickup only, but it is not, the end user, or the east end user, I should say, is not a, uh, user that has a drive-through operation as part of its, um, standards. So, and just for the board's information, uh, back on the twenty-fourth of August when we were with the planning board, if they grant site plan approval, they will condition it that if, uh, if any user is going to use that drive-through, we need to go back, cause we'd have to talk about menu board and stacking and all of those items that go with a drive-through use.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone who'd like to talk to us about something related to the application other than the application itself? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB twenty-twenty dash zero-nine dash six. Upon the matter of request by Bowler Engineering acting as agent for Chick-fil-A Inc. for an area variance to redevelop an existing parcel into a new restaurant with outdoor seating and drive-through with less than required front setback and to allow for an additional freestanding sign on premises eleven fifteen East Ridge Road in an M manufacturing district.
Excuse me, Chairman. While, um, we were waiting for the setup, I just wanted to point out that we did provide an updated, uh, site plan. Um, for the board, you all received the original site plan, um, as part of the application. It's been revised um, since then, um, based on comments that have been made through the planning board's review during site plan. So just note that the proposed freestanding sign is shown. Um, at its location, it's conforms with the setback requirements and also the proposed size conforms as well with the zoning requirements.
And the freestanding sign is where?
It's right along the Portland side. Um, it's, it's, um-
Right along Portland Avenue behind the bus stop.
Okay.
Need to, need to pass out magnifying glasses with this thing.
Oh, apologies.
That little, with the hash marks in it, the little box?
Yes, the rectangular box and it, it, I do apologize and it ref, it refers to, um, a notation on the, on the table that's also appears on that, uh, sheet.
Oh, that's what those are. Okay. I'm with you, Brad. We need magnifying glasses with this.
Here they are, bigger drawings.
Yeah. Alright. So we're all set? I believe we're ready to go.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Tim Freitag with Bowler Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant, Chick-fil-A Inc.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dave Everett, uh, land use counsel for Chick-fil-A, uh, Whitman, Osterman and Hannah at One Commerce Plaza in Albany, New York.
If you could both raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
Oh, and counsel, I'm sorry, I, I normally don't require attorneys to. You have enough problems if you don't tell the truth, so. Generally need to swear here.
Be honest with Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Clip Mattson does wish he could be here this evening. Uh, he's with Chick-fil-A under some travel restrictions. So he's certainly viewing live via Facebook and continuing to support us throughout our pro, our permitting process here with the town of Verona, Coi.
Alright, it, it appears that there's nobody here who's here solely for this application. Is there anybody waiting outside to come in or anything?
I don't see anybody in the hallway stage to, yeah, so it looks like there's
Alright.
no one, from the public here to speak.
Alright, then for those who are watching, this won't apply to, well, it applies to anyone who's here, but you're not here for this. For those who are watching and just as a reminder to the members of the board, the issues that are in front of us tonight with respect to this application relates solely to the setback variance that's requested for the front of the proposed building and the freestanding sign. Uh, it doesn't relate to how the business is run, doesn't relate to any other issues other than that. And those, the factors that we're required to take into account for this application are the same as those we take into account with every other application for a variance. And it has, and that's the only thing that, uh, is really germane to the discussion tonight. So, if you'd like to go ahead?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll give a brief introduction of the project since this is the first night the board is, is seeing the application. And then Mr. Everett here will walk the board through the submitted ZBA application after I give a brief summary of the project. So we're looking to redevelop the currently sitting vacant, uh, former Staples facility out on Portland Avenue. We're close by to the application that was just before you, across Portland Avenue in the Home Depot Shopping Center at eleven fifteen East Ridge Road. Uh, we're here in pursuit of two area variances, as the chairman introduced, uh, one for a canopy in the front yard and a second for a second freestanding sign on the lot, since the existing Home Depot Shopping Center sign uh, sits, uh, on the lot at the shared access to the site today. Uh, the existing conditions of, of the site, it's a eighteen thousand square foot building on site with about ninety-three percent impervious lot coverage, including parking lots, um, sidewalks and building coverage. Uh, Chick-fil-A is proposing to bring new light to the center. They're proposing a five thousand square foot building with, uh, associated drive-through and parking facilities. Uh, we'll be increasing green space on site by approximately twenty-two percent. We've got a pretty large two-point-three acre, uh, property that allows us, uh, some additional landscaping, uh, opportunities here. The site lies within the M manufacturing district here along this heavily commercialized corridor with similar commercial uses. We're permitted use subject to site plan review by the planning board and a special use permit by the town board. We're currently before both boards, um, seeking those, uh, special use permit and site plan review approvals. The layout here in front of you is a colored rendering elevation of the black and white site plan that was, uh, submitted. You can see the building is located in the northeast corner of the site. The drive-through wraps counter-clockwise around the building with the drive-through entrance really isolated to the, uh, southeast corner of the facility. This layout is the result of many months of, of engineering and site, site assessment and traffic impact studies to maximize, uh, circulation efficiencies on site. This user has, has been known to, to bring- circulation efficiencies onsite. Uh, this user has, has been known to, to bring heavy traffic, uh, to their, their facilities within the drive-through, so we want to make sure that we're maximizing stacking capacity, capacities and parking onsite. So this layout really allows that, uh, to happen here. You've got shared access to the Home Depot and what is actually Wendy's across from the shared access on our property. We're not proposing any new curb cuts to Portland Ave. Uh, we are proposing some mitigation elements to that shared access drive to offset any potential traffic impacts of the project. Um, we're here tonight, obviously, to, to talk about the two requested area variances, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Everett to summarize, uh, his ZBA application.
Thanks, Tim. Um, so we're...
I am, I am so sorry. We, in order for this, like, to, recording to work well, we need you to stand by the mic.
Sure, I can, I can certainly do that, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Um, so we're, um, as Tim had mentioned, we're basically seeking, um, two, uh, area variances. One, with respect to, um, the canopy here, um, which Tim is pointing to. Uh, the purpose of this canopy is it's basically over the ordering area, so when patrons come in, um, there is a, you know, a, a canopy under which they will be for ordering purposes. Um, Chick-fil-A, to try to maximize the throughput, um, through the, uh, the, the drive-through, uh, will station, um, in a number of situations, um, uh, team members, employees, uh, in the, underneath the canopy with, um, tablets, um, so they can help, um, you know, people order. They can answer questions, um, they can actually place orders right there, um, and that actually helps move things through very quickly. So, to the extent that, um, Chick-fil-A wants to provide, um, cover for these employees, um, the canopy is located there. Um, it's a standard thing with Chick-fil-A restaurants to have this canopy, um, over the ordering stations. Um, it is within, um, partially within the setback, um, which is 50 feet. Um, Tim can go over the, the rationale for, you know, why it needs to be in this location, um, and we are, uh, seeking a setback for that. Um, the thing for the board to understand and to consider, and I'm sure you're very familiar with this particular location, is there is a grade change between Portland Avenue, um, and where the canopy is gonna be located. Um, it's anywhere from six feet or, or more, a grade change, depending upon kind of where you are in that location. Um, so the canopy is set lower, um, there is partial shielding, uh, of cars, um, based upon the grade change. The canopy is very thin, um, doesn't have any HVAC equipment or anything on the roof, so you're not gonna be able to see any of that when you drive by. Um, and, uh, there's also some other things in front of it that act as a shield, certainly not a complete shield, but there's a guide rail, there's a bus station, there's some, you know, the telephone pole or two, um, and there's also gonna be another guide rail on the Chick-fil-A property. So, it'll be some, some things in between it. Um, you have in, um, the area in the commercial corridor, a number of canopies that are located, um, same distance or even closer to the road. We provided that information, uh, in the application materials for the board to consider. Um, so we did talk, um, internally, and we have investigated trying to move the building in different locations on the site to try to avoid the variance or to try to minimize it to the maximum extent that we possibly could. Um, there's a variety of reasons why, you know, we're unable to do that. The primary reasons are, um, you know, the lot tends to narrow, you know, down here, um, and so the setbacks over there really constrain, uh, where a building could go, um, so you really can't push the building any farther down. Um, you know, if, if you did, you would also hide it, um, by the topography over here, uh, as well as the screening, and so this is actually the best place for it. Um, and, you know, we did in, in our application go through all of the criteria that the zoning board has to consider. Certainly not gonna, not gonna go through all those tonight, you know, the board has it, and I'm sure that you've read it and, um, fully understand it. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, but generally, you know, our position is that it's a heavy commercial corridor. This is consistent with what's already in the corridor, and we're not gonna be adversely changing that at all. And this is very critical, um, to the Chick-fil-A, uh, project to be able to move forward. Um, so we feel that, um, the, the variance should be granted, um, if you so desire to do so. The last thing is, um, there's a freestanding sign which we're proposing out on Portland Avenue. Um, this site is a little unique in that we have a Home Depot pylon sign up here, which just happens to be on this particular property, so that really qualifies as the freestanding sign for, for this lot. Um, but we would like to have sort of our own sign, um, you know, out there. Um, it complies with all the other requirements, as your planner indicated, um, other than the fact that we're only allowed to have one freestanding sign per lot, so this would be the second one, um, and we would ask you to consider a variance for that, um, in this particular location. The other thing that's pretty important with respect to that signage is that you can't really see the Home Depot sign, so if we were to, you know, uh, from, uh, from Ridge Road up here, when you're traveling in this direction, it's obstructed by, you know, vegetation and those kinds of things. Um, so kind of having, you know, our own sign out on, uh, Portland Avenue, uh, would be really important to the economic success of the project, so we wish you to consider that. Generally, that's it. Thank you for your, for your attention. Certainly, you know, willing to answer any questions you may have.
As far as your traffic flow, you can come in off of Portland, go, you know, go all around and around, then you show an exit, would it stop, you know, heading back towards Ridge Road again? Is that just a right turn only gonna be, going back to Portland? Because that's what you got on here.
So is the question here or here?
There.
Here?
Yeah.
So this would be a right turn only, that's correct?
Right turn only. My, my only concern is because a lot of times the Home Depot, there, people are going through the tops, there could be a lot of congestion coming around, going in and out. The other one is two ways, the further one down, right?
That's correct. So that's where they would circulate back to Home Depot is through that southern access drive?
Okay. So you wouldn't have the option of coming out of Chick-fil-A and then going through, uh, Home Depot to get to where the light is up on Ridge if you wanted to proceed west on Ridge. You're gonna have to make a left-hand turn onto Portland and then have the light to turn left onto Ridge.
Right here, there's actually full movement with a shared access drive between our premises and Home Depot.
All right, so you...
You could exit that drive, go to this four-leg intersection with Home Depot to circulate back out.
Or you could go behind Home Depot.
Uh, you could, but that's more of a service drive for delivery trucks.
I've seen plenty of traffic through that.
You know the shortcuts, don't you?
Yep, mhm. All right, so, yeah, that's, I had missed that. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Oh, I do have one other question. How are you gonna make sure that, that, that people don't try and, is there gonna be some kind of a raised, uh, area that will keep people from turning left anyway, even though it says right turn only and is configured to do that way? Because there are plenty of people who turn, try and turn left off of Ridge into McDonald's, uh, up at the Ridge and Hudson one, even though it says no left turn and the curb is there. Is, is something gonna be there to pro, you know, at least discourage people?
We're actually extending this curb median between, uh, the inflow traffic and the exiting traffic on the shared access drive to help eliminate that left turn.
Okay.
And then we're also putting in this dedicated left turn in to the site that would also block any vehicles there. So if there's a, a patron sitting here trying to turn left into the site, they'd be totally blocking the opportunity for anybody to cut across.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do you know when the traffic studies were done?
Um, the traffic study was prepared over the last few months, started in, you know, March or, or April time. Um, they've been revised and updated to as early as last month, and...
The only concern is traffic has been awful light.
So the, just for the board's, um, reference, this is currently under review by the planning board for site plan review. Um, the, um, Monroe County DOT is reviewing the submitted traffic impact analysis. Um, I believe that additional study is underway, and that's gonna be handled at the planning board level. For the purposes of Seeker for this project, it's actually a type-two action, so, um, because, uh, signage and the area variance for setback or lot line relief, um, does not require any further analysis under Seeker. So the issues that you guys are raising are, uh, ones that the, both the town board and the planning board will be addressing.
Yeah, and, um, if I can assume correctly that the concern would be over data collection during COVID when the traffic flow is, is...
It's been awful light.
So, um, SRF Associates is the traffic engineer on this project, and they've actually, uh, conducted studies on other developments, uh, specifically the Dunkin' Donuts, that they had some recent data that they were able to utilize for our, uh, study.
Before COVID.
Pre-COVID.
That's right.
Pre-COVID, yeah.
Yep.
Well, they got a lot of data from that.
Yeah.
We still hear about that. This has nothing to do with the application, just curious, as I've driven by there on a fairly regular basis, that parking lot has been full even though the building is unoccupied. Who else has been parking there, and I assume they'll all be gone and park elsewhere?
Rochester General.
They were gone today.
Yeah, they weren't there today, I don't know.
There were no cars in there today.
I believe Rochester General, uh, construction, uh, staff may be parking there, um, while the, the building is empty.
Gotcha.
And now they've been blown in by this meeting.
All right.
Good morning, gentlemen.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board?
Concern about the increased traffic leaving and turning onto Portland Avenue that's not...
Again, that's a, an issue that the planning board and the town board take up as part of their application. Yeah, because it's not, yeah, the se, you'd have to look at, for the setback, um, you're looking at, you know, its impact on the, you know, the visual impacts or the impact on, uh, the neighboring properties. Uh, same thing for the signage, impact on views, um, you know, mobility, things like that.
But this, but there is, the revised sign is compliant besides the fact that it's the second sign on the property?
That is correct, yeah. So it's compliant in size and setback.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll, uh, open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone who'd like to talk to us about setback signs or anything else related to the application without being in favor or opposed? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, that was the last case on our agenda for tonight?
That is.
So we will take a recess to eight twelve. One oh nine Windale is here, okay. Uh one forty-five Pontiac left, forty-six Fern Castles here. And both of the Ridge Road properties are here, okay, so. Alright, so the uh first case for which the applicant remains pertains to the application relating to one oh nine Windale Road. Is there anyone that uh wishes to make a motion? Oh, first I have to indicate this is a type two action for secret purposes.
Um, I would move that we would I would move that we would approve the application as proposed. Many of the corner lots in this neighborhood already feature side yard fencing or shrubbery uh for the purposes of providing privacy, separation from pedestrian foot traffic. On many of the sidewalks that run parallel to the backyards, I believe the fencing would be consistent with the character and aesthetic of the neighborhood. And others who do feature this kind of fencing, um as applicants already noted, the fencing would no impede, impede DPW services uh in the neighborhood or around the property. And I believe for these reasons, uh the addition
Excuse me, I'm so sorry, Sean, can you just make sure the mic is on? It gets a little, yeah, it's, for some reason, I don't think it's.
Do you want me to repeat all that?
You know what, you can just, high level, you can
Sure, sure. Um so I'll just a, again say, I would move that we approve this application as it's been present, presented. Um, many of the homes in this neighborhood, especially corner lots, do feature fencing uh as the applicant is uh seeking to uh put up um specifically for the purposes of providing some privacy as a lot of the sidewalks do see a high level of foot traffic in these neighborhoods. Um, so this allows for some privacy for the homeowners and I think it's consistent with the character and aesthetic of the neighborhood. Um, also, as the applicant noted, this in no way would impede DPW services around the property or through the neighborhood. Um, and I don't think there are any discernible physical or environmental impacts uh to the property. So for these reasons, uh I think it is an appropriate enhancement to the property.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, no one is absent, we are fully constituted this evening. Next uh item for which, on the agenda for which the applicant remains present is the application pertaining to Fern Ca- forty-six Fern Castle Drive. This is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion, we approve the application as presented. It's not a big, uh two hundred square feet, more than the, the norm. Um, the, the alternatives are, what he's already doing is going off-site. It's not a substantial request. I don't think there'll be any effect on the physical or environmental conditions. And it's, it is a little self-created, but today a lot of us have a lot of things, places to put in the garage, so.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Any uh abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, and there's nobody absent, we are fully constituted. Alright, next application pertains to twelve thirty-three and twelve sixty-seven East Ridge Road. Uh, this is a is this a type two action? It is, okay. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve the application as submitted uh with respect to the following findings. Uh, this will not uh, it's not resulting in a negative change in the character of the neighborhood. It will actually uh improve the neighborhood somewhat by reducing the sizes and locations of the buildings, which will add more open space that's going to be used for the, to increase parking over what would otherwise be available and maximize parking for the site. The alternatives that would not require a variance would uh drastically reduce the amount of parking that would be available to serve the uh establishments that are going to be occupying the buildings. Relative to what is present there at the time, this time, it's not a substantial request. There will be no negative effect on the physical or environmental conditions if the variances are granted. It is self-created to the extent that they're trying to redevelop and improve the property. Uh, but other than that, uh that is not a, a factor, but for which the um or reason, in my opinion, why the uh application should be denied, uh and that would be the proposed findings that I would make. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, we remain fully constituted, nobody is absent. Next item on the agenda is the application pertaining to eleven fifteen East Ridge Road. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Uh, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we grant this application as presented with the following findings of, of fact. The granting of the requested variances will not um present any negative change to the character of the neighborhood. Uh, the alternatives that do not require a variance would require the relocation of the uh canopy and the sign. And that would uh increase the uh likelihood uh of creating additional circulatory problems in, on the site and adjacent to the site. Uh, the request is, is not substantial, will not have a negative physical or environmental, impact on the physical or environmental conditions if it's granted. It's, again, it's self-created only to the extent that the applicant is uh redeveloping and improving the property. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a statement, please. Uh, I will be abstaining from voting on this. I have previously signed a petition expressing opposition to this project due to Chick-fil-A's history of homophobia and its support of anti-LGBTQ groups. Um, and it's been advised that since I have publicly done so, I will not be uh voting on this case.
Okay. Any other uh discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any other abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention, nobody is absent, the board remains fully constituted. The next application on the agenda pertains to fifty-four Thatcher Road. This is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we uh grant the variances as requested. Um, I don't see uh the building and the structure affecting the character of the neighborhood. Um, it seems to be in line with uh the type of property, which is a unique piece of property. Um, it, the applicants demonstrated that they had looked at alternate solutions but would require removing trees. Um, and again, the configuration of the property uh puts the only, their front yard really in the backyard uh of the neighbors. Um, it's not a substantial request. The shed itself is not um large or out of character of what we see in the neighborhood. It's simply uh the location and the uniqueness of the property that creates the issue. I don't see any environmental effects um in the, it, while it is self-created in the sense that they want to build a shed, um the design and layout of the property is not self-created.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention, uh no one is absent, the board remains fully constituted. Uh, the next item pertains to the application for one forty-five Pontiac Drive. This is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an applica- or a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we grant uh the application as presented. Uh, seeing as um he just wants to replace a small portion of his fence on the backside of his house because uh his neighbor, uh when he opens up his bedroom ru- uh window, his neighbor's driveway is right there, so he's looking for some privacy. Um, it's not a substantial request. It is self-created in that he wants to put a, a fence up there and he's choosing to do that. Um, but for privacy purposes, uh you know, coming from a community standpoint, I think that that would be fine. And I think a lot of other people would probably do the same thing. Um, and uh as far as o- other alternatives, I mean, he could put up blinds and things like that, but I believe there is a, there's already a fence there and he's just replacing it. He does need the variance to do that. And um I think uh it's just in character with other uh houses and fences within our community.
Second. Who seconded that, Rhett? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, nobody is absent, the board remains fully constituted. The last item for consideration tonight would be the minutes that everybody should have received with their uh packets for this evening's meeting. From our meeting on August third of this year. Did everyone have a chance to uh review those? Does anyone have any uh suggestions for any revisions? Seeing none, I would move that we approve the minutes as presented for the uh August third uh meeting. All those in favor? Oh, wait a minute, I need a second for that.
I'll sorry.
Robson will second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? And we have two abstentions, um Ms. Bickett and Mr. Scott, who were not present. Motion carries, five votes in favor, no opposed, two abstentions. Uh, and that, I believe, concludes our agenda for this evening, and we are adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the ICAAT zoning board on ICAAT Government Access.